Talking about Mount Spur. Really, starting in February, we started meeting with the Muni and the state talking about an expected potentially serious fire danger season. And of course, we're always tracking other threats to our schools. So I thought I'd take this opportunity with Woody. His real name is Jared Woody. I don't know why he just goes by his last name, but he does. But he's got, he had a decade of experience at the state working emergency operations before he started working for us. A significant amount of experience in exercise design and, and execution. And he really is our expert for, for the National Incident Management System, the Incident Command System. He's helping us revise the emergency operations procedure, our policies and procedures, and really getting a handle on how do we prepare the district to be, really build our capacity so we're ready to respond to emergencies. And so I did want to give that introduction for those of you who haven't met him. We've had also this year, we've had, and we've done this every year. We've been building capacity by having Emergency Operations Center training. The last time we stood it up for a real world event was in 2018 for the earthquake. And that was quite an event prior to Woody getting here. I think all of you are aware that was incredibly busy for, for weeks for us. And then years later, we're still just now finishing the last earthquake repair at buildings. So I'll go to the next slide and hand off to Woody. Oh, it didn't share. One second. I guess I'm not a good sharer. One second. It's, it'll get there. It's slow.
Awesome. Thanks, Jim. So I wanted to start off with kind of a high level overview of some of the things we have in the district as our preparedness before we get into those specific components. So this is a list of the emergency plans that we keep as a district along with our update cycles. So the big ones that I think most folks are familiar with is our Emergency Operations Plan or EOP and our Emergency Action Plan or EAP. The EOP is our district wide kind of umbrella plan that we keep. And then the Emergency Action Plans or EAPs are what our individual schools fill out. These are updated annually by state statute. We're required to review and update every year. So the last revision was in July of last year, ahead of the school year. We've finalized the last draft on both of those plans. They're being reviewed for any last minute edits, and then they'll be ready for next school year. We also have the District Closure Plan that's updated annually based on changes in the districts, changes in what we forecast in terms of winter weather, things like that, whether we're in an El Nino or La Nina year. And then we get into some of our more specialized plans, our mental health plan, which presently is biannual. Our Crisis Communications Plan, which is every five years, that's currently in update. And our Emergency Operations Center Plan, which governs how our EOC runs. We just finished up that update earlier this year. Typically, the update cycle is determined by the maturity of the plan. So right now, mental health is being assessed biannually because the 2023 edition there was the first version of this plan. So we want to go back and assess that based on exercises or trainings, changes that we identify as more people become familiar with the plan. Whereas Crisis Communications and the EOC are more mature, so we've moved them to a five year cycle. This is all, this slide overviews the authorities that basically govern how we plan for emergencies. So on the left, this is a slide we stole from FEMA a little bit. So we have everything from presidential level policy, that's PPD eight Presidential Policy Directive eight. Working through state law, we have a couple that live in different sections of the state. The Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, where I used to work, has the Alaska Disaster Act, which covers a lot of how the state does NIMS and ICS. Then we have our specific laws, those three listed under the Department of Education. That first one there is why we have to assess our plans annually. And then we have two kind of broad board policies that have been approved. One of the things that we did note as we've gone through this process over the last year, we are a little light on our ARs for board policy governing us specifically. So we're working with risk management and the chiefs to start that process to develop new ARs that will kind of add that granularity that we're looking for. All right, getting into some of those specific things that we've been hearing about over the last six months to a year. So Mount Spur, we are doing ongoing monitoring and coordination with a number of partners. As Jim mentioned, we're working with the municipality. We're working with the Alaska Volcano Observatory, USGS, National Weather Service. Basically getting those updates on a daily basis. One thing that we have seen a lot of requests about is the color coded status with the volcano. We've heard a number of questions about what happens if it goes orange or what happens if it goes red and what that means. One of the things that our partners have really wanted us to stress is that the color coded threat status is a mixture of about six different variables that the scientists are looking at from gas emissions to ground deformity to a number of factors that tell them what way the volcano is moving. One thing that they have also added is the color threshold is actually an FAA color system. It's established internationally for aviation. The key thing to look at is the word that comes behind the color. So whether it's a watch, a warning, anything like that, that terminology is more for the ground level effect. The ash fall that we may see is going to be included in that consideration, not necessarily in what the color code is. And we'll look a little bit at, at that on one of these future slides that Jim's going to talk about, I believe. So other than that, you also see a list of the preparations that we have done, a couple that I just want to hit on. The draft messages, we are prepared to issue messages should we need to. Those have been translated, not only, we not only have those ready in English, but in the top seven languages in the district other than English. And we are also doing more outreach to the community as well. We did an event at Clark Middle School over spring break where we talked to the community and provided more information on volcanoes, including a pamphlet on home preparedness. And we're going to be repeating that on May 23rd at another outreach event that we have scheduled.
And internally, we've, we've done drills with transportation and the senior folks. So everybody knows from maintenance, which has a team that can turn off all the external vents within 10 minutes from anywhere. They can do it from cellphone or, or computer with the exception of four. And we have a team going that knows which schools they go to when, when they get alerted to turn off those external vents. We have the procedures for cleaning ash afterwards. Everything pretty much locked down and it's, it's really a matter of, and we'll talk about this in the next couple of slides, when we decide to implement actions. And it, and it really goes back to ash fall. When you look at the 1992 event, it happened in, August was the first eruption, lasted for three to four hours, same thing for the second and the third in September and June. I'm sorry, June and then August, September. You can see that the ash fall on these, we really only had one, the one in August, where ash fall actually hit Anchorage and it was about a quarter inch. And we've got a slide later that shows if you go to the Alaska Volcano Observatory, the AVO website, every single day it has an ash fall projection from 5,000 feet all the way up to 60,000 feet if the volcano were to erupt today. So if you go there to, in this mornings on their website, it projected at 40 and 50,000 feet that Anchorage would get ash fall. But on any given day, it could easily go into the interior. It could go to the Southern Peninsula. And really all of our decisions from the moment we hear eruption are going to be based off ash fall. If it's not going to go anywhere near Anchorage, we wouldn't cancel school. We wouldn't, we, we would certainly be, make sure we were more ready and prepared and increase that. But we wouldn't make decisions that involve daily instruction. It's really all based off ash fall. And these are pictures actually from the 1992 volcano. So, you know, initially when, when the news media picked it up, because it's, you know, it can really be hyped up that, that the volcano and some of you have seen on a lot of news channels in the lower 48 that Anchorage is scared, we're terrified. You know, some people probably thought we were a lot like Pompeii if this thing goes off. But, but this is what a quarter inch of ash actually looks like. And this is what actually happened in 92 and not what we see on the news stories that are written in the lower 48. Now, it is true that when the ash fall is, is coming in, you may not be able to see the front of your car if you're driving. And I think all of you know, there's a lot of things you should, I, I hope you've already prepared, like ordering extra air filters because you can only go about 50 miles before you replace them. There's a lot of things you can do to prepare your house and your vehicle. And we talked about that at the Clark Middle School event. We also sent stuff out on, on the radar for principals to talk to their communities and families. But this is what actually happened in 92. I wasn't here, but if you weren't, this may give you a clearer picture as to what they're expecting. And they're saying that it would be about equivalent. So in 92, the ash fall that hit Anchorage was going over Anchorage at the 50, 60,000 foot level. Now, of course, you know, from an Anchorage perspective, there was ash on the ground and it did shut down Anchorage for 72 hours because the stuff had to be cleared up. A lot of the services weren't fully operational. Where it really impacted is air travel. And some of you, I know Member Higgins is nodding, remembers the air travel was shut for a while and they had to reroute a lot of things before that was possible. And that's really one of our bigger impacts we're going to feel.
So as Jim mentioned, here are some of the products that are available on the AVO's website. So there are kind of two that are available. The first one that's kind of in the back there with the blue, yellow and red coloring. This is something that USGS generates. It is kind of showing the area of expected ash thickness from a fall based on the day. It is a little more variable. It doesn't always align perfectly. They, they do want to stress this is not a weather prediction or a strong ash fall prediction that would be, it would be updated if an eruption were to occur. The other one that's more at the front there with kind of the gray map, that is the Ash 3D or Ashed Model that AVO publishes. They publish this for the current day as well as two days in the future, based on the forecasts. And it shows basically the likelihood of a disruptive ash fall within that area. So the darker the red, the more likely that you're going to have a disruptive level of event. And anything in the dashed line is classified as possible. It's greater than a 5% likelihood. So we are watching these and using that to say on a daily basis, what is the kind of risk? If it were to go off today. Most of the time, what we have seen so far is the winds are blowing northward away from the city. Sometimes they're heading out south into the Gulf. About, I would say a quarter of the time or so right now, we're actually seeing it come over the city. And again, we're still at a yellow status, so we're not anticipating that anytime soon. But these are very good tools. So if you have folks that are concerned, they, that just want to know more on like, hey, I'm worried about this. Where can I go to find out if we're at risk today? AVO's website's a really great resource for them with that. I do also want to say, if this were to occur over a weekend or at night, we are tied in with the AVO duty officer. It's a 24 seven scientist that is on call. They have our cell numbers. We have their cellular phone numbers. So if this were to kick off at two in the morning on Saturday, we're going to get a call or we're going to be able to call them and get information very, very quickly. We're not waiting for, you know, business hours, Monday through Friday.
And we have had more than one event with the Jay Bear leadership talking through from the 673rd Weather Squadron and not just the projection of ash fall and, and how much, but how quickly it would arrive. And really that's how you decide if it's 10 o'clock in the morning and you know, the ash flow is going to go to the Keene Island Peninsula and completely miss us, we're not going to close school just because a volcano erupts. But Jay Bear, of course, has my phone number and, and it's usually snow related, but, but we can also talk about volcanoes in the middle of the night. And we've been in contact with the city manager and their leadership. And since January, February timeframe, we've consistently updated each other and have a pretty good plan from the resources at AVO and, and USGS through Jay Bear. Has a lot of technical capacity and of course the city. So we are as ready as anyone could be in the school district if it, if it does blow. I will tell you though, when it goes from yellow to orange, there will be a natural elevation in the amount of angst in the community. Just so you know, there are, there are volcanoes that have been orange for four years and never went red. So orange just means now the ground is really deformed. There's more, there's more gases coming out. Lava is closer to the surface, but you know, four years later, so you know, we won't make immediate decisions just because it goes from yellow to orange. Unless it's really imminent and they can see stuff already really deforming rapidly. It's really based off ash fall. So at community council meetings, that's the best we can really tell them.
All right, so we'll move on to the wildland fire risk as we get into summer season. So we have heard, of course, that we don't, didn't have a lot of snow this year, as we all saw. And the wildland fire risk is elevated this year. These are some photos of some of the historic fires that we have had in and around Anchorage over about the last 10 years. We have had five urban interface fires in the South Central Region. Sauk Eye, Card Street, McKinley Fire, Swan Lake and the, the McQ Fire. All five of those were either in Matsu, Keene High or the municipality. And they've all occurred in the last 10 years. And in many cases, they did burn homes, businesses, things like that. Does not include all of the other ones that we have out there. So, so far this year, we do monitor the Alaska Interagency Coordination Center, the state's kind of wildland fire clearinghouse. It's put on by Division of Forestry, the US Forest Service and others. They have reported 72 wildland fires as of this morning. Two of those have been in Anchorage. The vast majority of them have been out in Matsu or the rural areas of the Keene High with a few up in Fairbanks.
So when you look at the pictures, the one on the lower right is actually from a couple of weeks ago. And it was over by the Costco off Burgau. And I, and I only wanted to put that in as a talking point. If you read the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, you'll see that well over 98% of all fires in the Anchorage Bowl in the last 10 to 15 years have been human caused. And I think all of us have seen in the past several years, campers who accidentally, hopefully, started fires in the Anchorage Bowl. And that's really our biggest risk. We don't get the numbers of thunderstorms that they get in the interior. But you know, when you look at where's our fire danger, it's, 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 if it's human caused, it could be anywhere in the Anchorage Bowl and not just the hillside. Although obviously I've spent a lot of time talking to the, well, the whole community on the CWPP on a south side evacuation and what that might look like. But it, it could be downtown. There was one behind Andy Ratliff's house a couple of years ago and it was pretty big. They contained it. But there's a lot of places where the camps are in places that aren't easily reachable by road. And that's really our, our biggest threats in the city of Anchorage.
So as Jim mentioned, it's typically human caused here in the city. The top two causes of wildfire in the state are lightning strikes and human caused actions. Of the five fires I listed, I think four were attributed to humans. And the last one was indeterminate because there was no lightning in the area, but nobody's quite sure why it kicked off. So what we are doing to prepare for this is we're doing community outreach. As I mentioned before, we have an event on May 23rd. We're working with the migrant ed department to do that outreach. We've got some materials from the State Division of Forestry that we're going to be passing out. We have invited some of our partners from the Alaska, the State Emergency Management Organization, the Red Cross Salvation Army and others to join us there to kind of help get the word out. AFD, I believe, is also going to attend and they'll be able to talk more about how to, you know, prepare, what not to do. One of the biggest things that we have seen, if you are out in community councils, is the state is working this year to open the, the brush, brush drop offs. I don't remember what they're called, where you take wood and the woodlots. Those are going to be free this summer because the state does not want people burning in place due to the wildfire risk. So folks are welcome to load that up in their vehicles, haul it over there. They can dump it for free in order to minimize that risk. As Jim mentioned, we are working on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan update. This is led by the municipality. This plan is updated every five to 10 years and is basically the document that guides wildfire preparedness for the entire municipality. There are many partner agencies that are on there. We are an active member and participant in that process. They've had, I believe, two, possibly three meetings so far that we have attended, working with them on it. Well, we're going to take just a second to note that for our record, Member Bellamy joined us at 4:11 PM. And then I see Member Holloman had a question.
I do, and I will ask this for each scenario. For example, in, we do have an ash fall event and it's say dangerous to drive. As a general rule of thumb, can we say to the public, don't worry about your kids, they're fine. Don't, don't rush to the school. And I realize there may be circumstances where it varies building by building, but, or are there certain schools where we would say, if this happens, be prepared to come get your kid?
I built a slide just for that question near the end of the brief because I know that that question has come up from the community. And I will explain why there are no pre-designated sites for communities because you could actually put them at higher risk if they thought there was a pre-designated site. And then of course, there was nothing there when they got there and they didn't listen to the evacuation routes. Because subconsciously, people under stress are going to go with what they think they're supposed to do and not listen. And it might very well be that the actual place they should go is completely different. There's also the, the city got about a half a million dollars in federal grants. If you go out by Campbell airstrip Road, out by Mike's house, which is fire danger high, sorry, Mike. They're, they're clearing a large amount of vegetation on both sides of the road. And they have two other places in Anchorage. So that'll be going on for the next six weeks as they, they try to build some fire breaks in areas that, you know, potentially could be problematic.
We have one more question from Member Higgins and then we'll let you continue on with the presentation.
Oh, yeah, a couple of comments. You made reference to the ash, first of all, I'll say this, unlike Mount St. Helens, this was rounded ash, which was better. But I got to tell you, when you think about a quarter inch of ash, you don't think about much. But this stuff was like lead. The weight, I had a little medicine thing and it was full of, and it was very heavy. So it's just, it was problems with one of our roofs. I know East High School, I think, because it puts it in one location, it causes a problem. On the fire protection issue, are we looking at some of the issues like black spruce? Any black spruce in the area? Because that's one of the things, I'm with the fire group, I'm, my wife and I are both working somewhat with the, with community council too. And they've come out with their lists and black spruce is one of the issues. It's just timber out there ready to blow up in case of a fire. Are we looking around our schools to see what we might want to do to reduce the risk to the school?
Absolutely. That's why I built this slide so we could talk through that.
Oh, sorry about that.
ASD a couple of years ago got certified as fire wise. So we have been going out now for several years and going out to every school building and looking at standoff space. And, and I've got some pictures I can, I can explain it a little bit better. So there may be in a given area, moderate or, or even, you know, high risk category, but it doesn't mean that our schools are. One, unlike a house, they're not built of wood. Two, when you see some of these aerial photos, you'll see that, that we have standoff space. Our buildings are made of concrete. There's always some risk that something could get on a tar roof or a rubber roof and, and catch fire. But we have been certified as fire wise for the efforts that we put into it. We look at it every two years, we rotate through. Because we didn't have a lot of snow this winter, Rob's teams were out looking around as soon as we, we knew it was going to be potentially a threat this year and looking for dead black spruce and other vegetation. So UAA Iser, I think everyone here knows Iser, worked with the city and the state and they put together a threat. worked with the city and the state and they put together a threat matrix all across the Anchorage Bowl. And you can see at the bottom of this slide that, that really the vast majority of our schools, because of either standoff, the type of vegetation, or how quickly water runs off. Like if you go to Service High School, because it's so high up, the water leaves the ground pretty quickly and it's going to dry out much quicker than somewhere like Golden View, which is really almost a swamp for, for quite a while during the early part of fire season. But we really only have 10 schools in the moderate category currently. And that is a combination of water retention in the ground or likely water retention. It's the amount of vegetation, how close and, and how much of it is dead. And, you know, there's no way you can make anything fireproof, other than maybe steel buildings. But let me show you real quick. Because I know it's been brought up and it was actually brought up by one board member heard that Golden View was, was at high risk of fire danger. But if you look at the area around Golden View, we have standoff between where the trees would burn and the impact on our actual building. Where people are concerned is how close all of the neighborhood houses are and all the trees around the houses, and they just don't have that standoff. The most they have is whether the fire will or won't cross the road. Once it gets in the neighborhood, it, it's really pretty densely populated. So, so Golden View, actually, we, we have a consultant now trying to figure out. We have a lot of water being held in the Golden View ground. And, and it's because they built a housing development above Golden View years ago. And we're doing a drainage assessment. But, but the real reality of Golden View is it pours water off of Golden View for the first couple of months of, of spring and summer every year. And the people below Golden View are not happy about it. So we know that Golden View has a lot of water. It is, it is a low risk school. And I know that, that, you know, other people have talked about Golden View is, is high. But it's, there's so many reasons why that's not the case. And then you look at Service and Trailside, it's actually moderate. And it's not, it's, which is higher than Golden View. You can see it's got huge standoff. And really, the buildings are not at risk very much. But the grass is going to be drier at service. And any shrubbery is going to be drier at service than it is at Golden View. Because the water just flows through that area and keeps going downhill. And I know there's at least one board member lives in that area. You know, it doesn't hold water. So, in fact, Trailside and Service are moderate by ICERS and the Fire Department's study. But again, as you shift to the left side of the map and you start looking at the housing developments, that's really why we're fire wise sites. And it's just that standoff that we have between where the fire is and the likelihood that it would catch a building, one of our buildings on fire, other than a woodshed, which I think we wouldn't be concerned about if there was a huge fire. And I'll let, this is it.
Thank you, we'll go to Member Holloman, the Member Higgins.
I just wondered if we do have staff at the buildings, do we have the ability to water the roofs? It does seem like the only part of the building is likely to catch fire.
That I don't know. But I don't know the extent, I, I know that we can. I don't know the extent and for every facility, but that's a good question.
Thank you, Member Holloman, we'll go to Member Higgins.
Yeah, I just, real quick comment, first of all, just from a public standpoint, I think the municipality is engaged more with fire protection activities than we've ever seen. And I don't think there's ever been any. And I feel pretty good about that and following that. My, my question would be, our response to the community in case of an earthquake, things like that. Because I know our food service, water supply, being able to do all that was part of that factor at one point, a part of a plan that we would be helping out the community. Is that an issue now? At one time, it was a problem because of water supply system. The big tank wasn't working or the equipment wasn't reliable. We upgraded all that about 10 or 15 years ago. But are we, at this particular point in time, is there any issues there?
We just got that tank operational again in the past month and a half. And it is, it is known that it, it would likely or possibly be used to provide fresh water to the community in a FEMA type event if it was required. What we don't have is the bottling plant, so it would be water trucks. But it's certainly potable water. But we've been working for two years to get it back online. The pumps were, were gone. The tank was covered in mold. It was, it was completely unusable, as, as you're aware. And it took us two years to get it back in operation.
Just a question on the volcano eruption, since that was the natural disaster we navigated most recently, at least potentially. After we confirm all students are safe and the, the impact is minimal. As from a building standpoint, do we anticipate much maintenance to bring everything back online the way it was? Is that something that FEMA may declare a disaster for and provide funding for? What, what does that look like from a dollars and capital investment standpoint?
It's going to be expensive. Whoops, other than roofs where we might have to make an exception because the last thing you want is for the ash to be even heavier. You're supposed to water it down before you sweep it up, like all the parking lots, all the sidewalks, everything else. You wet the ash before you do it, which makes it even heavier. And it's going to be time consuming. It's going to take a while to get all that ash picked up. We have, is it 12 or 13 turf fields? And astroturf, when ash gets in on it, it, it goes down to the bottom. And when it gets wet, it, it becomes incredibly hard. So every year when we open our turf fields after the snow is cleared, we actually have to go out and test it for how much bounce it has. And if the ash comes up, then you've got to clean that turf out. In Seattle, it was so bad after Mount St. Helens that all of their astroturf fields, they just covered on top of it. And we're looking at getting large vacuums, which have their own problems. But over a period of time, we could vacuum the, the ash out. You know, would we have to cancel sports for a while? Yes, we would. But when you vacuum up the ash, there's these little rubber balls that are really small and they spread them all over the turf field. And then they rake it out and make it all level. It picks those up too. So if, if it covers our turf fields, they're not going to be used for a while. But, you know, really the cost is going to be the manpower cost for that, the roofs, the parking lots, it's going to be expensive. And depending on the estimated dollar amount, that's what we kick in, the governor to declare an emergency at state level? And then ask the federal government to also declare it an emergency. And if that happened, then FEMA funds, assuming they, they have a large enough organization to support, would kick in.
Just a quick follow up regarding, so going back to buildings for a second, thinking like our, our HVAC systems, will there be negative long-term impacts there? What I think I remember is we made significant capital investments during the COVID era to those systems. Is that going to impact anything?
Now, once we close the external, external vents, the heating will still work. What it'll keep doing is recycle the air. So the first thing we do at district centralized level is to shut off all external vents. And then have maintenance go check the, the couple of buildings where they need to double check a few that might need to be manual. The second one, and while that's happening, if you're in class, in school, is having people close every window so you don't bring ash into the building. Because once it gets in, it's just going to start rotating out. And we know that as parents come to pick up their students, we'll have a procedure where the parents come up, stay outside the building. The doors open while the students come out after they've made confirmation that that is the approved guardian. And then the door closes to try to minimize ash going into the building. And if you do all of those, our HVACs are going to be okay. We do, we did already, I don't know, January, February? They all came in by the beginning or middle of March. We have two sets of vehicle filters for every vehicle in the district. That's a white fleet. And we have two sets of filters for every single building. So we're good.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, anything else from the team?
Yep, so we have a couple more slides for you. Before I move on to these slides, I did want to add two notes to questions that were asked. So to your question about FEMA dollars, I did run back for any FEMA declarations relating to volcanoes in the state of Alaska back into the 1970s, there's never been a federally declared disaster in Alaska for a volcano. So just as an awareness, despite the Readout eruptions, previous spur eruptions, it's never risen to that federal threshold under the Stafford Act. So from a budget perspective, that may be a factor.
Can I ask a quick, while we're on the topic, I guess, does that mean, I mean, should we be bonding for equipment related to this expense if the federal government isn't going to pay for it? I mean, I know, well, I don't, I wonder how many other school districts in the lower 48 have to legitimately invest in capital dollars for this? I imagine it's a fraction.
I think we've done a lot of preparation by digitizing and automating our buildings over the last decade. And that's why we're able to, I mean, every major renovation, if it wasn't, if it, if we didn't have systems in it to be able to automate it and control airflow with, you know, the DZGO DA, VAV, I think it was during COVID, when we used all that money. We've made a lot of improvements to our buildings. Really, a lot of it was COVID. We weren't thinking about a volcano at the time. But that automated ability to turn and turn, turn on and turn off, really the vast majority of our systems and the air control and, and exchangers that we upgraded, it, it ends up made us more prepared for a volcano as well.
Okay, and to Member Holloman's question about ash fall and driving. One of the things that we do have incorporated into the emergency action plan for schools is if it is unsafe to release students onto a bus during that, during an active ash fall, they would enact their shelter in place procedure, just like they would if there was a fuel spill outside the school that was generating fumes or anything like that. That would cover them long enough for the ash fall to hopefully stop and then be able to move as opposed to more of a congregate sheltering thing, which I know Jim will address here shortly. Moving on to the, the slide in front of us. So one of the things that we are working on that we wanted to highlight is we are working on a new initiative called Preparedness Days. This is something that we actually borrowed from the Orange County Public Schools event that they do every year. And this is looking at some of our emergency preparedness. This will be going on in June, from June 10th through 12th. We will be activating our EOC and working with a lot of our partner agencies to explore how we communicate EOC to EOC, our emergency operations centers, as well as coordinating our public messaging, things like that. This is just kind of a sample of those partners that we are looking at or that are involved. This event will not focus on a natural disaster, but many of the lessons and the processes that we're going to practice are going to be the exact same, whether it's a natural or man-made hazard or anything like that. And if you want to give me the next slide. And just kind of give you an overview of the timeline that we've been working on this for. So we attended an Orange County Public Schools Preparedness Days back in July of last year. We came back, talked with Jim and a few folks about what, what we had seen, how valuable it was. And then we started building this, this new initiative. It's really been engagement with our partners since October of last year, starting with how this was going to look and what it is. And now we're, we actually just held an in-progress review meeting, our second to last one earlier today. We have one more and then we have the exercise. So we are inviting out principals who want to observe that. Of course, any board member that would like to come and observe is invited as well. But we're really looking forward to getting that better integration with our partners at the state, federal, nonprofit and other local entities.
This one is focused around a human threat within our schools. Orange County had a tragic incident several years ago. They invested a lot of money and resources into, they now have full-scale exercise to include students being evacuated for reunification. And they've put a lot of effort into it. So when he went to Orange County, it was very, we deliberately picked that school for that reason. So if you Google their reunification drills, their response drills, you'll see that their news channels picked it up. We are not, if you do that, we're not there yet. This will be the first time that really since George Vakalis had my job a couple of decades ago, that there has been a full-blown exercise with every agency in town. We have hospitals here, we have the hospital in the valley. We've got every major player for this exercise in June. And we're only going to amp it up next year in order to make sure that as a community, we're prepared. Now, whether it was an active shooter or a hillside fire, evacuation is evacuation. Reunification is reunification. But we wanted to get as many players as we could for this. And it's been a, it's really been an amazing opportunity over the last four or five months to see the, the, everybody pull together. And then for the community wildfire, a lot of the same players. And, and I will tell you, as a city, since last July, there has been a lot more emphasis on preparing for threats, emergencies than I've seen in the 10 years I've been in the district. And it's really quite nice to see every player show up for these events. So a lot of work, but, but yeah, it's definitely worth it. So I wanted to talk about shelter sites. I know, I know that board members go to community council meetings and people are thinking, well, I, I want to know, do I go to Golden View if there's a fire? There's, we do have 22 shelter sites and this slide shows what's in them. They have enough supplies to temporarily support about 1,000 people. We use the Red Cross standardized list plus some additions because we're a school district. And, and we operate it as a district. Our school staff has an SOP and they'll operate their shelter site, if it's for students and staff. It's, if it's for a long-term shelter site, that's the Red Cross's job. The Muni and the Red Cross would come to our school, they would do an inventory of the container and the building. And then they would operate it really with no, little or no involvement from us. There's always the possibility, as Member Higgins brought up, that water might, might be an issue, whether it's at that site or, or any other site. And, and there's always the possibility that our central kitchen could be used as a FEMA site. But by and large, the actual shelter site would be operated by the community. And, and for those who've spent their lives in operations center, the bulk of my adult life has been in operations center somewhere in the world. There's so many reasons, you would never tell someone ahead of time, hey, if anything happens, go here. Because they really might go to an actually worse place. The city has a lot of sites that are potentials. They include schools, they include community centers. You know, the big public arenas that are also potential sites. We would never want anyone in the community to think they should automatically go to a specific school. There might be absolutely no one there. If it's a fire, it might now cross the road and they're blocked in and can't go anywhere. Shelter sites are only designated by the city. And there's a lot of players in that. We know the procedures between the Muni and ASD if they ask us to make one available. We know that we could potentially open it while we're waiting on Red Cross to get enough people. But these shelter sites, they're, they're not just for students, but there's no community permanent relationship and, and we wouldn't want them to go to the wrong place in the event of a real catastrophe.
And one thing I'll add to what Jim was saying about the pre-designated sites. This was observed real world in the tragedy at Lahaina, where some folks evacuated along established evacuation routes that actually led into more danger. And as a result, they were either injured or, or killed as a result. So that's why we are very cautious about pre-establishing these things as opposed to communicating them in the moment, in dynamic events.
So barring any other questions, I did want to make sure there was time for budget discussion with Andy. If, if the board so chooses, he's been eager all day waiting for an opportunity.
Hard to turn down that opportunity, thank you, Mr. Anderson. So seeing no other questions from the board. So seeing no other questions from the board, thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate your work. Mr. Ratliff, welcome.
I don't have an actual presentation or anything. I think we're just going to open it up for discussion about the current events that could affect our budget.
I'm shocked to hear you don't have a full PowerPoint presentation on the developments from the last few hours. Understood. Are there questions or items of conversation from the board? And while we're getting started, I guess, I will ask if we are tracking what I am, that there's a bill, I think it was SB 184, regarding school bond debt reimbursement that I think is still sitting in Senate rules. And so I'm curious if the fact that the legislature adjourned today means that, functionally speaking, school bond debt reimbursement, the moratorium has ended?
It appears to be still in the Rules Committee. So that one hasn't passed.
Right. And so again, from a functional standpoint, the fact that the legislature failed to extend the moratorium, de facto means the moratorium has ended. Although the dollars to pay for any bond debt reimbursement wouldn't be appropriated until next fiscal year?
I guess they could still, I mean, it's still in the, the amounts to repay any bond debt reimbursement prior to 2015 is in the current budget. That could be vetoed, or it might have been reduced a little bit. But yeah, any future bond debt could also be reduced, even if it was approved through the, even if it was allowable, through the statutes.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the board regarding budget scenarios? Or Dr. Brian, did you have comments on the legislature's wrap up at this point?
President Jacobs, essentially, the main thing we've been tracking today would be the most obvious news, which is the fact that the legislature did override the governor's veto from yesterday of House Bill 57. So that represents some positive things for education, including a $700 BSA increase, which should be permanent in the formula, along with a number of policy reforms that were negotiated across party lines embedded by educators. So we are proud of that progress. But really, the only thing I want to share with the board is really just the caution that I feel in my heart because the governor did call superintendents to a meeting last week and did expressly indicate he's considering a veto of the appropriation for education funding. He reiterated that sentiment yesterday during a press conference. It remains to be seen if that will happen and if it does, what the amount will be. But that's certainly one of the most relevant issues that faces our board as we plan for next year's budget.
Understood and agreed. Member Lessons?
Thank you. I guess I'm just hoping for a high-level process assessment of where we go from here.